Rash.
Present.
Chair Diaz.
Here.
At seven present at six o'clock.
Great, thank you. Can we rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up is the approval of our meeting agenda and minutes, and I'm looking for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for tonight, as well as the minutes from our Committee of the Whole minutes, March 28th, 2022, and our school board meeting minutes from March 28th, 2022. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Sorry. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, and that motion carries. Wow.
How about it?
Packed house. And Chris reminded me that actually this is how our every school board meeting looks. Everyone, yeah.
Well, maybe a little crowded.
Usually it's an echo chamber.
We love it. We love it.
This busy, we might not be doing what we need to be doing. Yes, absolutely, thank you for having me. Board Chair Diaz and South St. Paul School Board Superintendent Dr. Zembrino, thanks for having our Activities Department here to kind of highlight a little quality in action, all the wonderful things that have been taking place inside and outside our building all winter long, you know, from a number of different activities. And I'm not going to try and go too long because there's so many people here, so I'm going to try and be mindful of time and let our advisors and coaches kind of highlight and talk about different groups as they are here. So I'm going to keep myself short, and I'm going to start with our girls' basketball coach, Austin Brandecker, or Austin Junker. He was the first one that kind of, sorry. I was thinking.
Austin Brandecker.
Coming up, Coach, and we'll turn it over to Mr. Junker.
Getting confused as a Brandecker is a compliment, so I'll take that. So if you guys haven't met me, Austin Junker, this is my third season as the head girls' basketball coach. Right here, I've got Abby Roseberg, who was our captain this past season, and is also this year's Athena Award recipient. This year, our girls' basketball team had a very improved season. We were able to have our highest conference and section finish in the last 10 years. Abby, our captain, was a unanimous all-conference recipient, and finishes her career top 15 in points, top 10 in steals, and top 5 in assists. Just an outstanding career, and it's been an awesome job. It's been an awesome job just having an opportunity to coach her fellow seniors, Natalie Henry and Caroline McLaughlin, who I'd imagine will be seeing them at the scholarships and activities banquet a few times as well. But we just want to appreciate the board for you guys, support the Lions Club, for their generosity to us over the last three years, and just everything that you guys do to support athletics and activities for us. So thank you very much, guys, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yes, congratulations.
Chad, we forgot to ask Ally the question I always ask.
Oh, go ahead, Abby.
I'm going to Oxford University to play soccer, and I'm majoring in pre-physicians assistant.
This is her second time she's been here.
Yeah.
Right, she was here this fall.
She asked me a question a couple seconds ago.
Well, could I meet you off here in the lobby? I'd like to ask one more, just so I get it right. Congratulations, Ally.
Yeah. I'm also going to do a little pinch hitting here for our boys' basketball team. With me here, I have Devin Newsome. Our boys' basketball team, what a spectacular season, not only the girls had, but the boys had, just a lot of excitement in the gym, right? And having been here 24, 25 years, it was great to see that gym as full as it has been. It has been 25 years, and I hadn't seen that. And so just the cool things that Devin and his group brought to our facility, and through the leadership of Coach Edwards, and Coach King, and Coach Miller, Coach Eppinger, those guys did a wonderful job. Devin is a senior, right? He's going to be going to his North Dakota College of School of Science.
Yeah.
Right? And playing basketball and continuing on next year. In his two seasons with us, 1,000-point scorer and above, right? So truly amazing, two-time all-conference kid, and really has become just kind of a really unique, cool kid around the building. Very measured in terms of his words and the things that he says, right? Very passionate, right? In terms of watching him compete and the way he plays, a toughness that I admire. And then I just, an overall kind of like coolness that I just really embrace as well. So, yeah, a couple other guys, right, that couldn't be with us. Alonso Dodd, right, has been a standout performer, just like Devin. Mr. Basketball finalist, right? Sounds like he got a nice opportunity, and some other scholarship opportunities are coming his way. Alonso doesn't exactly know where he's going to land for school next year. Sean Westemple, another 1,000-point scorer for us. That is a two-time all-conference kid. And then Kayden Muah was another young man. So we had four all-conference kids on the boys' basketball side. So let's give Devin and his teammates a big round of applause. Guy that needs no introduction, we'll turn it over to Dave Palmquist. David?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for having us tonight. I really appreciate it. I've done a lot of public speaking, but it's always nerve-wracking to get in front of people, and we just really appreciate all your support throughout the years and this school year. Special thanks to Mr. Sexhauer for his support and his leadership in our Activities Department. You need great leadership, and he's always been so supportive of me and our program, for sure. With me tonight is Lily Ramirez, and I'll talk about her in a minute here. I'm going to be real quick, I know everyone else is going, Palmquist, please be quick. And this year, I think when you achieve a goal, when kind of the expectations were, every year we want to go to the state tournament, and this year we kind of overachieved this year and made it to the state tournament. And the publicity that we got in the newspapers and seeing us at the state tournament, it just, it makes me so proud, because I just love South St. Paul so much, and I just can't help but think how great it is for our community to continue to see the love that we get from surrounding areas, and that South St. Paul is a special place. And our girls are really awesome kids, and one of the most things that I'm proud of is that they're so great in the classroom and in the community. Never have to worry about anything that they do that way, I'm so proud of them. Tonight with me, Lily Ramirez is here with me tonight. Lily is not only an all-conference hockey player, she was voted the Metro East Player of the Year. She was voted the Metro East Defensive Player of the Year, three-time All-State player. Lily is not only one of the best players on our team, obviously, she's one of the best players in the state of Minnesota, and she's a Packer through and through, and I just love her to death. And she will be playing next year at Minnesota State, where that program is really coming around, and will be one of the better teams in the WCHA for women's hockey. So it'll be really fun to watch her continue to play moving forward. But that's the Packer season of 2022. We're very proud and love these girls, and thank you again for all your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Lily.
Chad, I still have one question for Lily.
Yeah, Lily.
You've never heard this before, but would you by any chance be Miley's sister? Okay. Congratulations, Lily.
We're not, I'm not going to let her live that down now. That'll be a good thing to.
First person to ask that, I think.
Right, exactly. I'm going to just continue on with hockey, and have our head boys hockey coach, Peter Schultz, come up with his fellows that are here. So, Peter?
I'm looking good. Thanks for having us today. These were our captains, is Brandon Ogrin, Carter Heimerle, and Luke Dobmeier, three top students and top athletes in our building, and also represent half of our senior class. So good news is we were young, really young, and even better news is we had 23 of 30 kids make the honor roll in the first try. We have really good kids, we have great character, and, you know, we went through some adversity this year, most definitely, but really proud of our kids, and I think we had a positive experience for them, and we got better all year, so it was fun. We're looking forward to the next couple of years. Getting some sophomores a year older is going to be a benefit to South St. Paul hockey, for sure. Yeah, so. Any questions or anything from you guys? I don't really have a whole lot here to talk about, other than I'm proud of our kids, and, you know, really happy that we could come and talk a little bit about boys' hockey.
Yeah, we watched a lot of games online. It was fun.
Yeah, yeah.
Bubba was screaming in the kitchen, so.
Oh, looking forward to Bubba skating with him last night. It was good to see that guy on the ice, yeah, for sure. We, one thing that we have coming up here, May 21st, Nikki and Wendy and Chris have always been participants. We do have the Stride for Packer Pride 5K coming up here, so put that on your calendars, May 21st, 9:00 a.m., we raise money for kids in South St. Paul that have a difficult time paying activity fees. So for all of these athletes and participants, that event is important, and we've been doing that for quite a few years, and we're looking forward to that. And I know these guys are going to be running. I know Lisa Brandecker talked about making her comeback to the 5K track. She's going to be running. That's great, it's all good news, all positive.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Yes, thanks for letting us know.
Just kind of keep things moving along. I'm going to have Coach Fitzgerald and our dance ladies kind of come up. Coach Fitzgerald is going to step in, and so our dance program has and continues to be in very solid footing. But we had Tara St. Martin, who has been our head coach for the last, I don't know, probably 11, 12 years, take another position in another district, right? And so she left, and so we are in the transitional phase, and we have, the wonderful thing, as you guys know about our town, is we have all these graduates, right, that are so passionate, that when they're students and when they are involved in this, that we get people like Jenna that continue to come back and support and coach and Roz. And so it really is, right, a community lifelong thing. So I'm going to turn it over to Coach Fitzgerald and let her kind of talk a little bit about their season.
Thanks, Mr. Sexhauer. He's still Mr. Sexhauer to me. Hi, everyone. My name is Jenna Fitzgerald, and I am a 2016 grad and alumni. Thank you for having us here today. I'd also like to introduce our two senior captains, all-conference recipients and all-state recipients, Bethany Garcia and Brooklyn May. Another accomplishment that our team had is our team actually also received an All-State Academic Award, so I don't know exactly what the GPA is, but we have a really smart team, which is really great.
Wonderful.
To see. This past season, we saw a great amount of improvement overall in the team, the drive, dedication, and hard work that we saw. These two lead, and then also overall was just super encouraging, and really makes us excited for where this program will go. Like many other sports, we have an extremely young team. I think this upcoming season, no one's even old enough to drive a car yet. So we are super excited for this young group, and these two have been really amazing leaders and role models for them, and so really set the bar super high. We finished overall, third overall in our conference and sixth overall in our section. Also like to give a special recognition to these two, as well as our other senior, Josie Knapp. They have been with us for all six seasons. They've been great leaders, great role models. We will definitely miss them a lot, but we wish them the best of luck in their next chapter of their life, but we do hope you come back and visit. But yeah, thank you so much for having us today and your continued support of the South St. Paul Dance Team. We have nothing set in stone yet on the calendar, but we do a lot of community outreach things, some dance clinics for younger girls and boys to come and hang out with the team, and sometimes dance in the parade, and also a lot of fundraising throughout the entire calendar year. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Mr. Sexhauer, one of my favorite things about the dance team was the parents had posted a lot of videos online, and you couldn't even hear the music because the parents are screaming so loud. So then you could just see the girls dancing, and you're like, what's the music?
It is, when we host that one event a year, right, we have the dance through the conference, and it is amazing how loud the gym gets in the world, right? And it is like gangs in New York, right? They're factions, they dress up like whatever the jazz routine is, and dads are security at the door. If you've never been a part of it, it's a cool thing, because it is like the coaches are pounding on the table and screaming and yelling, it's just.
Yeah, all I heard was a cowbell. Cock-a-doodle-doo.
Yeah, yeah. We'll turn it over to our wrestling coach, Mr. Nyheart, Don Nyheart, Don.
All right, good evening, members of the board, Dr. Zembrino. Thank you for inviting us here tonight to share and recognize just a little bit of the accomplishments that our students here, student athletes, had this winter. We had a fun season. It's been a privilege to work with really dedicated and talented students and their families over the years, and this year was no different. A little different. We had a couple, a couple of big differences, actually. This year, the Minnesota State High School League sanctioned girls' wrestling for the first time, and we were fortunate to have a really good turnout, high interest level in girls' wrestling, participating in South St. Paul. We're really grateful to Chad and to the board here for approving an additional coach that allowed us to coordinate a really great inaugural season for our girls. South St. Paul was actually recognized statewide for having the most girl participants in the state, which was a pretty cool recognition. Our team attended the first, and so girls' team, the first annual Pine Island Girls Tournament, where we ended up finishing fourth place out of 32 teams. So it was a pretty cool way to start their season. We were fortunate to have Coach Teresa Tonda join our staff this year and help lead our girls to a really great first season. A little bit about the boys' season. The boys finished with a 23- and 10-do-and-meet record. They had three all-conference honorees and two honorable mention wrestlers. We had, our team reached the section final tournament for the 11th consecutive year, finished runner-ups, though, this year to the eventual state champs. We had six individuals earn academic all-section, and eight state qualifiers, six boys and two girls, that are all standing behind us here. Team earned academic all-state gold honors this year, which was one of the first in a while. We've had silver for quite a few years, but getting gold again was a great accomplishment on these folks' part. Team earned one academic all-state individual as well. We'll talk a little bit about the two ladies behind me here, Kashawn Brooks. Kashawn, maybe just hand up, yeah. Kashawn is a freshman. She had her first wrestling season for us, she had 18 wins. She was academic all-section, and like we said, she was a state qualifier and earned all-state honors. Ella George was a 10th grader. Ella was a first-year wrestler as well, earned her letter, and was a state qualifier and earned all-state honors as well. Shane Schwab, with the nice haircut back there. Shane, he's a 10th grader, he finished 27- and 12 this year. He earned all-conference honorable mention. He was a team captain, qualified for the state tournament at 106 pounds. This past weekend, just give him a little props, he went out and competed in some offseason tournaments and pinned the AAA state champ from this year's state tournament in an offseason tournament just last weekend, so that was pretty cool for him. Tomas Ochaki, 8th grader behind me here, had 15 varsity wins, also qualified for the state tournament, 120 pounds. Andrew Schwab, Andrew is a 10th grader, finished with a 24- and 8 varsity record, was a team captain, earned academic all-section, was a state qualifier at 126 pounds, and he just finished top 8 at a postseason national tournament for his age group. So he just had a great offseason start. Nixon Stroud, Nixon is a senior, finished with 27 varsity wins. He was a team captain, earned all-conference honors this year, was academic all-section, was a state qualifier at 132 pounds, and still determining his plans, as far as I know, for next year. I'm sure he will do good things. Nate Birchold, Nate is a 10th grader, finished with 37 varsity wins, earned all-conference a second time, was academic all-section, qualified for the state tournament again at 145 pounds. He also just competed in a postseason national tournament and placed top 8 at that tournament. And then Will Nyheart over here, Will, he just finished his season with 41 wins, which is number five all-time for our school's history. And he had 27 pins on the season, which is number two all-time in our school history. Was team captain for a third year, earned all-conference a second year, was academic all-section for a fourth year, was a state qualifier a fourth year, was academic all-state first team for a second time, and then plans to go on to wrestle, maybe, possibly, at Oxford College and major in chemistry. So that wraps up our group here tonight. Again, we're really happy to be able to join you and share a little bit about our kids' accomplishments. So, thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
Will, it's great you take after your mom.
Great job, girls.
You know, the great thing, Don gave a lot of accolades, right? He didn't really say anything about himself and the wonderful job he did kind of leading two different groups, right? And it's something that we are, as a department, going to have to kind of make some decisions as we continue to watch our girls' program grow, right? And it's probably just not going to be a one-person kind of gig. And so how exciting is that, right, to be able to continue to provide those opportunities? I'm going to have Ty Keer, our boys' swim coach, and his participants and athletes kind of make their way on up here to the podium. Ty?
Hello, board. I have with me tonight Stephen Eikens and John Rowan, who are two representatives from our state competition team this year. We had two more that are not here this evening. A couple of stats from our season, we had 50 practices over the season, swam 185,850 yards, which is about 105 and a half miles over the course of the season. It is, it is always fun looking back at past seasons and seeing what other teams have done. And so we've got a goal next year, we're going to have the most yards at a practice that we've ever done, which we have set this last year. As far as our season goes, we placed five out of 12 teams at the section meet, despite being one of the smaller teams there. Stephen and John both earned all-conference honors, as did the two other state competitors that are not here this evening. That state relay team included Stephen, John, Daniel Iverson, and Colin Rathmadder. They placed third at the section meet, which was the fifth-best medley relay time in school history. And that was enough to advance to the state competition. The 200 freestyle relay finished 1 and 41 hundredths seconds out of our top 10 all-time times in school history for that relay, with those same four swimmers. Some other achievements over the course of our season, every athlete had a best time at their final meet of the season, oftentimes more than one. Stephen Eikens placed third all-time in our 100 backstroke event in school history. His younger brother, Tom, who is not here tonight, set the school record for 8th graders in the 200 individual medley. And we had a 7th grader who's started swimming this year, who placed top 16 at the section meet, Caleb Schlemmer. So both high performances at the top, and some fun things to look forward to from younger athletes. The team grew from 12 athletes this year to 18 this year. We're going to be losing three seniors, including Stephen, but we are optimistic about the future season. We've got five returning juniors that are going to be seniors, including captains from this year, John Rowan and Daniel Iverson. And we had five new athletes that had never done swim team before last year, so middle schoolers that joined the team. So we're hoping to replace our three seniors with at least that many underclassmen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
So that kind of culminates, right, the athletic side. I think the only one group that wasn't here is our gymnastics team, right? Lisa Boudreaux was. Oh, is she out there? Is Julia?
I don't think the coach is, but.
Okay. Boudreaux, please. Right there. You can have them all come in for that.
Gymnasts.
Yeah, so. There you go, come on up. No, you're good. Tumble on up here. All right, cartwheel, something, no.
Not in this dress.
No, I don't blame you. So like I was saying, right, Julie Dornsey, our gymnastics coach, was unable to be here. This is our last group, gymnastics team, right, out of Central Square. It has been a smaller group, right? I would say of a seven or eight.
Yeah.
Same kind of thing, very young, right? So we are looking to have, find young people like this that are kind of helping the tumbling tots program in town and kind of continuing to grow that. But Elise was a state qualifier two years ago. The high school league redistricts and resections things, and all of a sudden we get placed in with like the state champion, right? And so a lot of spots got gobbled up this year. However, her numbers and her performances continue to climb. We had a couple team victories that were stellar against St. Paul Central, highly competitive against Red Wing, we beat North, beat Tartan, so in the middle of the pack within our conference. But basically have everybody but one back, and are really hoping to continue to drive those numbers up. Not to put you on the spot, did you have anything you wanted to add about gymnastics?
I don't know, I didn't know that I was coming here for gymnastics, so I apologize. I mean, I'm here for theater. But I've been doing gymnastics since I was five years old, and competing since I was like eight years old. And I love the competition aspect of high school gymnastics so much, and it's a huge part of my life, and I really, I don't know what else I can say.
You had a great season.
But, thank you.
What year are you in school, Lisa?
I'm a junior.
Oh, okay.
So I have one more year competing next year.
Yeah, so we'll see her back here.
Yeah.
Couple things, it's a great segue for us, right? Kind of culminating the athletic side of things, right? But the great piece, like for Elise, right, she is not only finding time to do athletics, but like she referenced, like being involved in theater and being involved in activities. And you're going to see now, as we kind of transition into activities, a bunch of kids that are here for more than just one thing, right? And so that will be a wonderful thing here as we kind of move over. So I'm going to bring our math team and Mr. Luke Olson to the microphone. We'll let Mr. Olson talk about math. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Zembrino. The first thing, I noticed Chad didn't say anything about the coolness factor of the math team. Had he done so, I might have gotten him his own.
It wasn't going to be about the advisor.
Personalized pocket protector, but, you know, you blew that opportunity. Thank you for the support that you give to the math team. Couple of highlights, we had a really young and really small team this year, and yet we finished middle in the pack of the pack in our conference. Every meet, we were giving up two places, which, you know, basically is two zeros, where others had a chance to get up to 14 points. Now, they all don't get 14, but, and we still finished middle of the pack. Now, our captains for next year are with me, Malia Meyer, who was a junior, and Yang Ling Hu, who is a, Yang Ling came all the way from China to join our team, to join our district and join our math team. So we've got great numbers at the junior high level, a lot of good mix of boys and girls, and so I'm really excited for our future. Did either of you want to say anything? Okay, all right. Thank you for your continued support.
Congratulations.
Well, I asked Mr. Olson to kind of work his way forward for theater. Is he, I think he's out on the outside there. Is he, I think he's out on the outside there. Much like what Luke was talking about, he didn't kind of go into math team. So math team never got in the same space all year. Everything that they did was virtual, up until the very last thing, where we host the state math tournament at our secondary site. And so, again, for them to be able to kind of handle some of the nuances, right, that we continue to transition through was great by him and his group of participants. So we'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Eric Olson, our theater director. Eric?
Hi, everybody. Can I have all my theater kids come up?
Just on cue, right?
Yes, on cue. That's a very clear cue.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So we're here talking about the winter one acts. Just kind of a quick little summary of that. We had one competition play this year, Jekyll and Hyde. We had eight skits, no, it was nine, nine skits overall that we performed. Seven of our skits were student-written. We had 11 student directors. We had 62 cast and crew involved in the production. And there were also, we tried to figure out how many, but it was a whole lot of Cheez-It boxes that were involved with the show.
I remember that, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm just going to have each of these kids come up and talk about what they did in the one act. One act is a great opportunity for the kids to get involved in a whole lot of aspects of theater production. That's always a goal of mine, is to get kids involved in as many aspects as possible. And one act with their shorter timeframe plays is a great opportunity to do that. So we're going to have Rissa come up first because she's going to be totally the trendsetter and show everyone else how to do it. No pressure.
Um, over here. Hello. I can project, it's fine. I was a writer, director, and an actor. I, oh, I'm Rissa. Hi, Rissa. Sorry.
You're a senior, right?
Yes, I am. Okay, cool. That was a bad example. So I wrote The Stormy Night, which was one of our skits. I co-directed a skit called Misadventures with Boxes, and then I was in our competition play, which was Jekyll and Hyde, and I played Dr. Lanyon.
Hi, I'm Wyah, and I directed The Ordinary Life of Frank, and I also played as Person A in A Brief and Expensive Conversation of Modern Art.
I co-directed Misadventures with Boxes with Rissa, and I also was in the competition play, Jekyll and Hyde, as the landlady.
Hi, my name is Kaylee. I was an actress in a show called How to Win a Woman in Three Days, and I was also a stage manager for the other half of the show.
I'm Bella. I was the other stage manager for the first act, and for the competition play, I was the lightboard operator.
Hi, I'm Ruby. I co-wrote She Had It Coming, and I co-directed A Stormy Night, and I was also in the competition play as Enfield Ann Karoo.
I'm Annie. I co-wrote She Had It Coming, and I co-directed The Stormy Night with Ruby, both of them. And then I played Dr. Jekyll in Jekyll and Hyde.
I'm Malia. I acted as the police in the competition play, Jekyll and Hyde, and I also acted in the skit She Had It Coming as Sabrina.
Hi, I'm Molly. I'm a senior. I acted in the competition play as Mr. Utterson, and then I directed A Stormy Night as well.
All right. And so thank you for having us here. We're just really glad to be back doing live theater. And not like last year, every show we started, we're like, are we going to get to close it too? And we haven't worried about that for about a year now, and that's been just wonderful. So thank you for having us here, and.
Absolutely.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
We'll see them in spring again, right, for the Laramie Project?
We will see them again, right? We all had, hopefully you guys had an opportunity to see the Laramie Project for the spring, right? And they will be with us as we kind of close out, and then we'll hopefully have Eric's middle school students, right, from his production this spring as well. I'm going to turn the microphone over to our debate coach, debate advisor, Mr. Conrad Anderson. Conrad? Oh, it's Knowledge Bowl. Sorry. Knowledge Bowl again?
Knowledge Bowl. Dr. Zambrino, board members, thanks for having us here. What a great night. My name's Conrad Anderson. I'm a proud Knowledge Bowl coach. If you don't know what Knowledge Bowl is, it's like high-powered trivia on steroids. We, students compete against other teams all over the metro area. We have these magnetic strips that, a reader reads a question, and the first team to buzz in has 15 seconds to answer it. We, we practiced from November till February with intermittent competitions, all trying to make the postseason. I think this year, we, if we, both the oral questions and the written round questions, we probably went through over 1,000 questions on various topics from literature, history, geography, current events, math, science. And this team, we have three, four-person teams on our team this year. This team, we have Molly Schmidt and Macy Ellis, they are captains this year. And our captains next year are Malia Meyer and Evan Sanford. Evan might be the fastest buzzer in Minnesota, and his teammates, I think he's too fast sometimes, probably. But they were one of the top-ranked teams in the metro area throughout the year. What's really cool about our team this year is all three of our teams advanced to the subregions, which has never happened before at South St. Paul. And we just fell, this team just fell short of advancing to the regions to qualify for state this year. So they've been just a pleasure to work with. I don't even know if I should mention this, but one of their highlights is they invite their teachers in every year to have a competition. And a couple of years ago, you lost by one point to the teachers, but this year they beat them soundly. So I don't want to discourage our teachers, but we've been practicing really hard, so. So I'm really proud of this group. They are absolutely brilliant, and it's just been a joy working with them. So thank you.
Great.
Great job.
Thank you.
We will turn the microphone over to our show choir director and vocal music, Mr. Kirsch. Lyndon?
Yes. Back again. Hello. My name is Lyndon Kirsch. I'm the six through 12 vocal music director and vocal music teacher at South St. Paul Secondary. Just a little bit about MEC as a whole. So MEC is this delightful experience, this is my first year being part of it, and not only did I get the opportunity to work with a multitude of different music directors over Minnesota, but also my students got the incredible experience to work with multiple different directors, as well as other honors, honor-level students, creating an exuberant amount of music. I mean, they were really diligent and dedicated to the process, and it was no easy task. I mean, it was some collegiate-level repertoire that they were trying to put together within two weeks of time, so I really give it to them. Just a little more broadly to these seven students, these seven students have showed tremendous leadership, drive, and commitment to not just MEC, but to a multitude of different music opportunities and performance opportunities here offered at South St. Paul Secondary. And I really wanted to take the time to thank them and honor them for their commitment and support, and just really being the model for what a student who commits to the arts and gives it their all every single time that they're at a rehearsal or at a practice. These students really, I cherish their work and I cherish their commitment to this program, so I thank them in particular, because without them, my program wouldn't be as strong. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And unfortunately, somebody always has to be last, right? And so we've saved the best for that spot. Our band instructor has a couple of different groups that are here tonight through concert band and jazz band, Mr. John Devine. John?
Hello, I'm John Devine. I'm the band director, and, awesome, we, it's our busy season in the winter. We have several ensembles. We have our show band that plays with our show choir. We have our jazz band, which actually is kind of a year-round thing, but it really kicks up in the winter. We also have our drum line, which is, I don't teach that, but it's part of our instrumental program. And we also have our pep band, which we're able to have this year to support our athletic teams. And we actually went to some state games this year, which was a lot of fun, and got to play at the X. And here I have today, I have, these students are involved in all those activities, or some of those activities. But these are our MEC, our Metro East Conference All-Conference Band Members. And so I know Mr. Kirsch talked a little bit about it, but we do things a little bit differently. We actually, the band directors all get together, and we have almost, it's almost like a draft, where we are filling in like, okay, who's got a flute to put here, who's got a clarinet, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, so we were able to send five kids this year to our MEC. Actually, we have two ensembles. We have a concert band, so four of them went to that, and then we had a jazz band for that. And our students are, we have Annie, Annie Voss right here, playing clarinet, was in the concert band. We have Raimundo Garcia-Cervantes, he was our tenor sax player. And then we have Wayne Watson, who is our, was playing alto sax for it. And then Luis Lopez was playing trumpet, and they were all in the concert band and with that ensemble. And then Joaquin Mendiola-Johnson was our bass player in the all-conference jazz band. So, and they did a great job, it was a great opportunity, they got to work with all the other schools in the, in the conference. And it's a very intensive two-day experience, and they had a lot of fun, so it was great. Do you want to say anything?
That's great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this was the first year, I, finally, I guess I'd been around long enough within the Metro East Conference, I threw a little bit of my weight around and just said, can we move the all-conference choir and band event off of the national championship college football game? So this way I can leave my house and actually attend. So we moved it to a night, right? Later in the year, and we made sure now that we have no events throughout the conference, so there aren't basketball games, there aren't hockey games, nothing else takes place except for that event. We hold it out at Monta Medei, at, I believe at St. Luke's Church, right there across the parking lot from Monta Medei High School. And it's just an absolutely wonderful event. And so on top of that, right, as we roll now, one of the exciting things for our administrative team and our building now, up at the high school, as we start getting into just this season where we get to highlight kids like this, but we start rolling with prom here in a couple of weeks, and then hopefully you guys can join us on Wednesday, May 4th, for I think it's our 78th annual activities and athletic banquet, right, where we're going to be recognizing our senior class and kids and families being back together in our cafeteria, right? And then you get into the scholarship foundation dinner and awards piece, and then you heard Peter talk about the stride for Packer pride. So there's just so many great things that are going to be almost happening now weekly within our building to recognize kids in South St. Paul. And a lot of that comes through your hard work and efforts to continue to support activities and athletics and all that wonderful work. So I thank you, we thank you, and I'm going to, it's cleared out pretty quickly now behind me as I look, so you guys can get back to doing stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you, Chad. Oh, that's me. Um, next, it just feels like such a letdown.
I know.
All the energy just went out.
Yeah, all the energy went out.
Super exciting for a while.
It was, it was really exciting. The report next on the agenda is the listening session, and we didn't have any public listening session submissions this week. And then next is Dr. Zambrino, will provide some highlights.
I'm going to try not to take it personally that they all cleared out as soon as I. And I have to follow that. That's tough, but you know, we'll get through it here.
Might have to do a little like jazz band show choir song or something.
Yeah, next time I'll bring, you know, one of my guitars or something, and yeah. But I don't sing. You'll never, you won't see me dance, and you won't hear me sing, and you'll be glad on both of those. But it is fun to get to come up and share some of the other highlights going on in the district. I know last time we talked about this, but just want to remind folks that we are moving, there's going to be a lot of construction work going on around here, so we're going to be moving our next board meeting out to Fleming Field at the airport. So we'll start there and be there for a while until they get this building back in order. That is located at 1725 Henry Avenue at the airport. And we'll send out more information as we get that, if there's helpful tips around where to, how to find that location. This came up a couple times, so definitely a big event coming up, the stride for Packer Pride, that is on May 21st, and that's the 5K Fund Run. It was mentioned that it raises funds to support our students' participation in extracurriculars. I've heard that it's raised over $100,000 to date, so a great opportunity to have some fun and support our students in the extracurricular activities that clearly mean so much. We saw the pride the kids had, the coaches, advisors, et cetera, so. We're coming up on that in the spring, it's always a time of year where we take time to recognize our staff for their amazing work, and the educational foundation is supporting that effort as well, so they're looking for nominations for Silver Apple Awards. So my understanding is that information went home in our elementary students' backpacks, and secondary, the link was shared for people to submit nominations. We're asking, the foundation is asking them to share, what quality does your favorite employee have that makes him or her so special? And so it's teachers, but others as well. We know so many adults impact our students on a daily basis, and those are to be returned by April 30th, so we've got a few weeks you have to get that information in. Spring break, obviously paused from the activities going on in a formal way at our schools, but there were some good things that happened as well during spring break. This is just a fun picture of a couple of classes that went on for art camps, they were two-day art camps. You can see the pride the kids have in showing their work there. We also had some opportunities for students to take courses on babysitting, which I thought was really neat. I have two daughters who babysit, and we couldn't quite find a class like that. So great opportunity to develop some life skills and some potential income. My daughters don't like me reminding them I only made $2 an hour when I babysat. I can't believe what they make now, so a good opportunity to develop leadership and put some money in their pocket. And the other one was CPR class that they had. So again, some important life skills if, could help them get a lifeguard job, but also help if someone's in need. So great opportunities during spring break. Also have a look at some of the opportunities coming this summer. So in summer programming, opportunity for our rising, our incoming kindergarteners to participate in an early learning summer blast. So that starts on June 20th and goes till July 28th, four days a week at Capoja. Breakfast and lunch provided, so great that the kids can come in and not worry about being hungry, and have an engaging morning and into the afternoon of activities to get them ready and geared up for kindergarten. A big transition, so great opportunity there. Talked about this a little bit last time, but the Summer Learning Academy for students, rising students in grades one through five. Again, the 20th of June to the 28th, Monday to Thursday at Capoja. Information there around where to go online and do the enrollment. Our incoming sixth graders, we know that kindergarten's a big transition, so that's great that there's support there. That transition to middle school, I know that well from having been a middle school principal for eight years. Big transition, love that we have the web program where everyone belongs, and so our student leaders help transition in our sixth graders as well as staff. And I know from talking to Principal Borg, they're really creative about having fun activities, so you can see the times and dates there, again, starting on June 20th, and goes with a little break in between that is at our middle school, gives kids a chance to tour the school, learn how to open lockers, which is surprisingly one of the most daunting and scary things as you transition to middle school. So I always tell parents, just buy a lock and have them practice at home, because it's a good skill to have. But that'll ease that transition and keep the kids busy and engaged during the summer. And then Community Ed, of course, has summer programming for both youth and adults. So summer catalog's coming online this week, so there'll be programming again for adults, youth, and then 55-plus for the senior center information. So that'll be coming out this week. So, that'll be coming out this week, information at Central Square website. And then for those who need all-day school-age care, we'll have that running from 6:30 to 5:30 this summer. And that's available for kids entering kindergarten through seventh grade. They'll do STEM and art projects, field trips, have guest presenters and speakers. So, keeps them engaged and for those who don't have, you know, care at home, so great opportunity as well. So, lots going on in the summer. Some other important dates, we have the High School Family Connections, April 28th. So, that chance for families to connect with the school staff, hear how their students are doing. Memorial Day, seems like that's late this year. Maybe I'm not tracking that one, but May 30th, we do have a day off of school. And then the last day of school, June 8th. And I know it's hard to believe that'll be here before we know it. I just like, the spring always goes by so fast. I had a meeting with the four principals today and some others, and I just said like, I love spring in the schools. It's such a fun time, but it does just go by in a blink. So, hope our staff and students, you know, soak that all in and enjoy every minute of the spring. I said, I don't do crazy spring. We run through the tape. I'm gonna ask our staff and students to just keep plugging and chugging and work hard right till that summer break, and then they can pause and enjoy a great summer. So, thank you for the opportunity to share some more of the highlights going on around the district.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
All right. Next on our agenda is the consented items. And under the consent agenda, it includes financial claims and bills payable and our staffing report. Do I have a motion for the approval of our consent items?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thanks, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. That motion carries. Next thing on our agenda is policy review, and there are no policies for review this meeting, but some are coming. Stay tuned. All right, moving on to the business item section of our meeting. And we have a couple of items. The first is approval for the resolution reducing educational positions. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks. And second?
Second.
Great. And we do have Brady Hoffman, our financial director, here to give a little statement.
Good evening. Each year as part of our budget planning process, there are changes in positions, changing in staffing levels, driven by student enrollment, changes in enrollment, budget reductions. Through this process, it's looking like there may be potential for unrequested leave of absence. So, this resolution is identifying the FIA department as a potential department that may have an unrequested leave as a result of those staffing changes. No decisions are made yet, other than simply identifying that department and there's the potential that this could be happening this year. So, this is just putting them on notice, I guess, that this is a possibility.
Great. Thank you. Board members, any discussion?
I'll jump in. This is something we've discussed at length through the weekend, through this last week during our committee meeting. And this is always the hardest part of the board's work. And I think we recognize that it's not easy for anyone that's involved, and there's valuable employees that are in this process as well. And I think it's a sign of some of the triage and some of the concerns with the declining enrollment we have had over our time. And kind of also strengthens our urgency for some really long-term planning about the systems within our school, about what we're gonna do to address the declining enrollment in our community. So, it's what they have to be heard.
It is.
Yeah, I would also point out that, that yes, I mean, this leads to, you know, tougher budget conversations, which are never fun. We were even just talking in our committee meeting about, like, if our district had an extra $10 million, what would we do? And so, if, you know, if our friends at the state legislature want to solve that problem for us, we would gladly accept, you know, additional revenue. But unfortunately, we as a board have to deal with the reality that we have on our bottom line and not what we would all wish it would be for our community. So, these are just really tough decisions that the boards just have to make moving forward.
Sure, yes, if I may?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments from our board members. These are not decisions that are entered into lightly by the administrators, and I do want to commend Brady Hoffman and Dr. Chad Schmidt for supporting our building leaders. I think you all are aware, but maybe not everybody knows, we've been in an interim without a full-time HR director. And so, they've stepped in to help our building leaders navigate some of these processes to determine decisions that need to be made. But, you know, I really want to make sure everyone understands how much we do value all of our employees, even when we're in these situations where we have to make these difficult decisions. And so, I know our building administrators worked really hard to stay focused on the priorities for our kids, but also knowing how much they value each one of these employees on both of these resolutions. And so, I've been on that resolution before on a probationary staff. I mentioned to you all where there were reductions and I, you know, got a pink slip. And it's hard to be on that side of it, but also want to make sure people understand how much we do value each and every employee, regardless of what happens with their employment status as we go through this. We do have some difficult budget realities, and we will absolutely work on our enrollment and our strategic planning to get out in front of this and do what we can to continue to provide our students with a world-class education and hopefully get to hire staff back.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. And Lisa, we need to call the roll for this, right?
We do. Yep. Inspector Lalliberty?
Yes.
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Chair Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Thank you. That motion carries. The next item is another resolution. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the resolution relating to the non-renewal of probationary teachers. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Little bit of discussion, please.
Yep. So, this resolution is similar, some of the similar reasons to the one before, but this one is relating to our probationary teachers. So, it's various reasons such as student-driven scheduling changes, declining enrollment. But there's also reasons such as licensure issues, teachers that are on a variance, temporary hires mid-year, or potential performance issues. So, this resolution would terminate the contracts of those probationary teachers listed at the end of this school year.
Dr. Zambrino, did you have any comments on that?
Yeah, again, you know, I know it's hard to see the list. I do want to point out, we obviously can't go through the list because of confidentiality, but some of the positions might be changing in their FTE. So, someone's on that list that's currently full-time, and some of the decisions that our building leaders are making might have a decreased allocation of time or FTE, we call it, full-time equivalency. So, some of the folks that are on this list may end up applying back in and still being within the district. Again, can't go through all those, but just want to make sure people know it's not that every single one of those disappears because our reductions are not as steep as that list is there. So, but again, every one of the employees there, we value, and we know these are difficult decisions. And we want to make sure everybody on there is supported and stands with success wherever they end up.
Great. Thank you for that clarification, too. Any other board member discussion on that one? All right. Lisa, can you call the roll, please?
Inspector Arndt?
Yes.
Inspector Felton?
Yes.
Inspector Walker?
Yes.
Inspector Roche?
Yes.
Inspector Weber?
Yes.
Inspector Lalliberty?
Yes.
Chair Diaz?
Yes.
That's seven yeas.
Thank you. That motion carries. And then the last thing that we have on the agenda for tonight are board member reports and committee updates. And we can start down with Wendy.
First thing, I'd just like to say thank you and congratulations to all the students and staff that came to our meeting here tonight. It's so, so wonderful to see those kids and share their pride with their activities and their athletic things. So, thank you for coming and congratulations on your honors and rewards. And as most of the staff members mentioned, they thanked us for the support of the board. Well, a couple of the things that are coming up that the board member and the community can support our activities and our students. Tomorrow evening, Tuesday, April 12th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Panera Restaurant in West St. Paul on Robert Street, kind of in front of the Target Store, there is a fundraiser being held for Lincoln Center. There's more information on its website where you can take a picture of the sheet, the promotional sheet, or put it, get it on your phone from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., a fundraiser for Lincoln Center at Panera. And then also, this coming Saturday, April 16th, at the Croatian Hall, as well-known, is a taco feed from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m., which is dedicated to the fifth-grade classes at Capoja Education Center for what they call their farewell party, which is kind of like the fifth-grade graduation party for students that will be entering up to the secondary building for sixth grade. And I've had the tacos at the Crow many times, and they're excellent. They're very good. So, if you want to support the fifth graders at Capoja, come down, come down to the Crow Saturday afternoon. And the other thing that I did personally, the boys' baseball team did a fundraiser, they had coupon sheets that they were selling. They were $20 each, and I bought, I bought two of them from students. And there's several, many coupons on these sheets, and I was gonna bring it tonight, but unfortunately I left it in my car. Coupons that you can use at local restaurants and vendors. In fact, I used my first one over this weekend, and I saved already, I already saved over $6, $7 on one coupon. So, if you want to support the baseball teams, you know, contact some of their members for the coupon sheets. And like I said, they're $20 each. And just one other thing to mention, coming up next week at the secondary building, granted it's not a fundraiser, but it is a true, true support activity for our secondary students. On Thursday, April 21st, at 10:00 a.m. in the morning, there will be a mock car crash demonstration. I have seen this more than once myself when it was held, you know, it's in the high school at the, in the football field area, for students, for safety procedures coming up for them. So, just want to support and thank everyone that is involved with the mock crash display and education series for our students at the secondary building. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Wendy. Chris?
Yeah, the baseball team with their fundraiser, they're a persistent bunch. We have a rule in our house that if someone is selling something as a fundraiser, if they come up to our front door, we will patronize them and buy whatever they're selling. So, the baseball player came up, we bought it, asked how the team was looking this year. An hour later, another player comes up. So, we had two of them, and then a third came up. And we kind of looked at each other and said, the rule's the rule. So, we have three, and so if anybody is a...
And they're great coupons.
They really are. It's a good bunch of coupons. So, contact the Activities Banquet. I'm sure they'd be happy to set you up, so. And speaking of the activities, this is always such a fun meeting, and it was, winter seems to always be my favorite of the activities. So, it was really fun to see everybody come together here. But, you know, the fall and spring, too, have their, have their moments, so I would...
You can't have favorites when you're a board member.
All right. I like, I like them all equally. So, just, I've said it before, I'll say it again, it's the best value in town to go to these activities. So, I just encourage you to do that, and I thank everybody for coming out tonight and sharing their success with us.
Thank you.
I have nothing at this time.
I too want to thank everybody who came out and talked about their achievements. As a parent of a youngster, a 12-year-old, I love, and I think we've talked about it on the board, like, one of our favorite things about this city is that kids can try lots of different things. You know, we, they sat here as they went through each group because they were involved in so many things. And not only that, but wow, did you hear the academic achievements, too? What a, what a cool role models, no pressure, but what cool role models for those generations coming up that you can be a good student and do all these fun things and be involved. So, thank you so much for sharing tonight.
I want to give out a shout out to the high school classes that were raising some money for the conflict in Ukraine and giving that very world look beyond just our own communities. I think that's really remarkable that we're instilling that in our students. And I know this was already celebrated a lot at the last board meeting, but I want to circle back to the Laramie Project because Spotlight Awards came in, and that production was so fantastic to be at, and it was also really celebrated among Spotlight Awards, which are a really prestigious thing for anyone who's in the theater community, and really well-deserved for the students that were involved in that production.
Fantastic. Well, I want to say that we were at the section finals game, I got the privilege of sitting right behind the pep band. And so, I got to watch their excitement and their energy as they were really a part of the, you know, the festivities that were going on. And I was in the pep band, and truthfully, only so I could get to go to all the athletic events because my ability on the clarinet, my enthusiasm was more than my ability to play the clarinet. We will, we will leave it at that. And yeah, it was so great to just see all the students here. And again, I think one of the best parts about our community is that so many students could be in one, two, three, four activities and get all their homework done. I think it just really shows the caliber of our students and the tight-knit community that allows people to try a variety of activities. And that is just in one season, like, through the course of a year, people might participate in half a dozen activities, which I just think is a phenomenal, a phenomenal thing. And yeah, I'm just looking forward to the spring and all the fun events that happen. And, and I hope we don't get any more snow. Can we have no more snow?
Did you just jinx us?
So, it's possible. So, blame me if that happens. Because I would like to see some baseball outside, and you can't do that when weather is inclemental, so.
That's it. Great. Bill?
I don't have anything tonight, Linda.
All right. So, that is it then for our agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Monday, April 11th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.[1787.83]